Now, we're going to begin the April 15th meeting of the special meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Council members Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Aaron Sananian.
Here. What's next?
Agenda for the April 15, 2014 special public meeting of the city council was posted on Friday, April 11, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. For you as a public hearing director of community development regarding proposed five-story, 220-unit tropical apartments project with a six-story above-ground parking structure to be located at 435 Los Feliz Road. That one is a motion approving a revised stage-two design review for a 220-unit project subject to comments and conditions of approval. He is a motion approving 132-space parking section based on findings and subject to comments and conditions of approval.
And we have two speaking cards. Do we need to open the public hearing?
At some point, I don't know if you want to have the staff report from Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order on this matter. This item should not be before us. It should not be before the council as an action item, specifically contradicting council's prior action in an open meeting several weeks ago. The action at that time was to approve the design of the project with a 25% reduction in density. It was valid action taken under the definition as stated in the California Government Code, Section 549, 542.6, and lacking a properly made motion for reconsideration. It is out of order for it to be before us today in this meeting. Now, it is not clear who asked for this to be brought back as an action item. At the very most, after reviewing the tapes and being here personally, I recall some interest in the council to reexamine the issue of the price that Dr. Cho was asking. I recall a discussion about whether SB 1818 entitlements should be afforded. Granted, the applicant has some information. This should be before us as an informational item, and then council should decide what their action should be. It is not proper to bring this item as an action item before the city council. Now, the city attorney may opine that the city manager may bring something on the agenda with the concurrence of the mayor. And I think that may be true for items and motions of first impression. But this is not an item of first impression. During the meeting, specifically on several occasions, the city manager requested that council continue the item. Those requests were rejected outright. They were ignored, and they were not acted on. It was council's decision to take action. What was acted on was an approval for the project design with a 25% reduction in density. The city manager is not a superpower. He cannot act ultra-virus beyond his powers. Council is the body that makes the decisions and sets the policy. To have council cast a clear vote on an item and then to have the city manager place it on the agenda himself, or with the concurrence of the mayor, of the then-mayor, who had the gall and disrespect during the proceedings, to tell me to shut up and who was falling all over himself to support the project, is not fair. It's not open. It's not transparent. It's simply not proper. It's a manipulation of the procedures that are essential to governance of this council. I'd also like to note that Ms. Laura Friedman is not here today. It's also fair to note that she supported the motion made March 25. It's also fair to note that whenever anyone else on the council states that they're not going to be present, staff bends over backwards to rearrange the schedule to put something on there. It is absolutely improper to put this on the agenda after Ms. Friedman, with a well-in-advance notice due to her religious beliefs, was not going to be able to be here today, to put this on the agenda. Now, in case any of you think I'm overstating the facts, I have a few clips that I'd like to run. Mr. Clerk.
And I promise, this was tested. Mr. Councilmember, and Mr. Mayor and council, we apologize. We have had trouble with the internet most of today, and it seems to right now.
Well, I think it's critical that the items be replayed, so everyone in this room and on this dais have no doubt in their minds the exact actions that occurred.
We will have it up in just a second.
Would you like to possibly take a five-minute break while we work through that to make sure that everyone can see the full clip? I think it's important that people see what's on that tape.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Your pleasure.
Five-minute breaks?
Uh-huh.
We're back? Okay, back on the record. Yes, Mr. Clerk, can we see the videos that are issued?
I know that move. You've used it many times, Mr. Najarian.
I haven't used it.
You don't like this project, so why don't you just shut up?
You love it.
I said it's adequate.
The other clip is following. It might be until that time.
I think this whole thing fails for a lack of clarity and...
Mr. Mayor, members...
I think we need the developer, give him a week to talk to the property owner and see if they can come to some agreement.
Two weeks, because I won't be here.
I might not be here in two weeks.
Two weeks, I'm not here.
We are prolonging the agony. I encourage my colleagues to put this for a vote, my motion as alternative three. I'm not sure how staff intended that to come before us. My motion is that we approve it, subject to the restrictions staff set forth in alternative three, which is a 25% reduction in density. Not necessarily reduction in floors, because you can combine two units to make one unit. That's a reduction in density. And that's my motion.
Okay, that alternative three, would that include up to 25%? Is it 25% and less, or is it a fixed 25%?
If, well, that would be up to the city council. However, if you would like to present a substitute motion for the approval of the design, to approve the design subject to a reduction also in the number of units, you could do that. And how that would be manifested in the design, subject to review and approval by design staff. I'm confused now, because I thought we...
We have a motion which was improperly, in my opinion, improper advice, unclear advice, and we voted to approve the design. And what I'm hearing now is that's the only opportunity to institute the density reduction.
No, I did not say that was...
You didn't say that. Or I thought you did. Wait a minute.
No, no, no. I said if that wouldn't give you, well, I didn't say this, but what I meant is that if that gives you more assurance, that that would also contain, if that is the desire of the council to include a decision to reduce the density, you could do that, because staff is able to review the design even if the density is reduced.
I make a motion that the project be approved with a 25% reduction in density, as reflected as alternative three in the staff report.
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
No.
Mayor Weaver.
No.
Okay, you have your marching orders. You reduce it by 25%, or tell Mr. Cho he can keep his land, and we'll keep the vacant asphalt parcel for who knows how many more years. Thank you for coming.
Is there another item?
Yes, there is.
Mr. Clerk, that's enough.
There was a motion duly made and seconded. Terms of that motion were clear. They were straightforward. Full council voted three to two. Another motion on this subject should not be brought before the council, Mr. Mayor. And I urge you, in your role as the chairman of this meeting, that we reject any action items before us. Should there be information? I have no problem with hearing the information. But to act and to place on the agenda an item which directly contradicts action, legitimate action taken by this board, this council, is simply improper. There was no motion for reconsideration made at any time. And to have something on the agenda, especially with a colleague that supported the item not here at this time, is absolutely manipulation of the system. And there's no excuse for that. She submitted her information to the city that she was going to be gone over a week ago, and staff knew it. And to have this here on the day that she's not here is improper. And I highly resent the manipulation of the procedures that we deal with. I'm not talking about the project at this point. I'm talking about the procedures that we all have to live with. Because if it's done today, it's done tomorrow for something you're concerned about, Mr. Quintero. It's done for something you're concerned about, Mr. Mayor. We, as a council, need to stop it and draw a line on it. And I, again, urge you to reject this item from the agenda as an action item and take it as an information-only item.
Yes, Mr. Quintero?
Okay, well, Mr. Najarian has made a number of comments, et cetera. Reviewing that tape, I assume that my verbiage of up to 25% is what we were voting on. Because I was clear when I made my comments, which, you know, I don't think, anytime I did it, but...
I have a couple of comments. I can address that, but also address some of the comments made. So let me first say, obviously, that it is within the mayor's purview to continue this. If you so choose, you could have the public hearing, for example, take the public testimony, and then continue it for a week. That's also an option. Certainly, an item to reconsider usually has to be made at the same meeting. The council could have decided to rescind. And let me just tell you what our thought process was, at least my thought process was, in conferring with the city manager and how this was put on. At that meeting, and just to answer your question, Councilmember Quintero, at some point, and I reviewed the tape, I wasn't here for that hearing, but I reviewed the tape, all the deliberations, and you did mention the up to 25% during the discussion. But then, as you saw from the tape, Councilmember Najarian made the motion. It did not include your portion and what you were thinking. My view was, and my view is, that immediately after that vote was taken and after the comments by Mr. Weaver, then the mayor, there was discussion by three of the council members, now Mayor Sananian, Councilmember Quintero, and Councilmember Friedman, that in the event that the applicant looked at the proposed project with the restriction that the council had just voted on, and came to the opinion that that project wouldn't pencil, then they would come back with some other revision, either the same project or some additional reduction, but not up to the 25%. And at that point, what I heard clearly were three of the council members wanting to hear that, whatever it was that the applicant was proposing at that time, and that would come back before you. And I think that, based on that, that's essentially asking for that item to come back, for at least two council members pursuant to our policy, asking for something to come back. And that's the way that I treated it. It was immediately after that discussion that occurred right there. And even Councilmember Friedman, who wasn't here, but she did specifically say, "We'll see that, and we'll have the opportunity to vote on that." So to me, I was hearing at least two council members pursuant to our policy wanting to hear the revised project, whatever the applicant felt that they could work, come back to the council. And so that's why, you know, I concurred with the city manager's request to place this on the agenda pursuant to our policy.
I would further advise that we had advised the city council later that week that it would likely be the 15th of April that the reconsidered project pursuant to your respective comments would come back. Here we are.
Is Ms. Friedman going to be here next week?
Next week, yeah. That is unknown. She is observing Passover, and it would seem that she may be very well gone on the 22nd as well. She most definitely will be back on the 29th, but she was very much aware of the dates and times that were discussed for the project to come back to you.
Well, Passover is over by next Tuesday.
I think that's the last day.
That's, I believe, the last day.
So it's within the council's authority whether to continue this, but I do believe you have the authority to act on it this afternoon if you so choose.
Okay. Let me just address the concerns of the city attorney. There was a motion made, a vote taken. Action was taken at that point. Anything that comes after that certainly does not raise to the level of an action and a vote by the council. And furthermore, looking at some of that information, we were talking about SB 1818 considerations, about affordable housing. And Mr. Quintero made a valiant plea that it provides a benefit to the community at no cost to the city. There was a discussion about renegotiating with Dr. Cho and to come back with that information. And bringing it back doesn't necessarily mean to bring it back as an action item. Bringing it back could be a response, saying, "Look, council, this is an update. This is your information." At such later point, if council wishes to rescind the action or to take a new action, that's when we do that. We don't automatically assume the council wants to put it on as an action item without hearing any of the information that they have brought before us. And that's where we went wrong. The dicta of the council, if you will, after a vote is taken, is, does not rise to the level of an action of a notice motion and a vote, roll call vote. And to think otherwise is to insert into the process the desires to make this project a reality. And we took a vote fair and square, and that's the way it came out. My motion was very clear and simple, and it was probably the least confusing five sentences that were strung together that evening. It's just improper, and it shouldn't be done unless there's a motion to reconsider.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Mr. Garcia, can we take a vote? I guess we need to, procedurally, it sounds like it would be safe to take a vote to reconsider and rescind before we take a vote to approve whatever is going to be brought in front of the council.
Procedurally, you can do that. It wouldn't be reconsideration, it would be rescission.
It would be rescission.
And again, let me add a couple of points. The item before you was, it's another notice public hearing on top of the one we had. So both, you know, all members of the public who are interested have the opportunity to come. We did all the noticing that we normally do. So certainly, it's the council's call, is my view. If you feel it's appropriate to hear it at this time, then that's certainly something within your jurisdiction.
And here's my objection to a motion to rescind at this point. It's because I don't have sitting next to me the other person that supported me in this. And a motion for rescission, guess what? It's a two-thirds vote. With Laura Friedman here, even if she abstains, it fails. If I can count one, two, three, that doesn't reach the two-thirds. But without Laura, guess what? They've got the two-thirds. And I will be extremely disappointed if that's the way the action goes today. Am I correct? It is a two-thirds vote?
I believe so.
And an abstention? Yes, it is. I double-checked, believe me. And in the absence of a rule to the affirmative rule, Robert Rules of Order, our rules of government, on our rules of determination under municipal code 2.04.140. And I, all I'm saying is, I strongly caution the council from going forward with a motion to reconsider, motion to rescind this matter without the other person that was here. That's a gaming of the system. But I leave that to council at this point. I think I've made my say with regard to the point of order.
Mr. Quintero?
Okay, well, in view of his objections, I would think the best way for me would be to hear from the developer. We don't need to hear from the property owner, because we all received a letter from the current property owner, Dr. Cho. And there's no question, he's not going to drop a dime. As a matter of fact, he's already losing quite a bit of money on this deal. But I would like to hear what they have in mind, what they're going to do. And then I think next week, it should be put on the agenda so that Ms. Friedman can deliberate along with the rest of them, and we'll do an up or down vote at that point. That's how I'd like to see it.
Okay, that would be to hear, but not us engage in debate. Debate would be next.
Just interested in what they...
Okay, we just want to hear.
Yeah. Sounds to me you're going to have the public hearing and then continue the item for next week for deliberation.
I'm inclined to go that way also. I think it's proper, since the party is here, to open a public hearing, hear them out. We may have a lot of questions going to ask them. And then postpone the vote, both on the rescission and on whatever vote comes next, until next week. And I understand that Ms. Friedman may not...
Yeah, but just to be clear, I think next week, there needs to be a presentation like we've had today, so Ms. Friedman can ask questions, et cetera, et cetera.
But just in the interest, in the interest of avoiding any appearance of there being a gaming of the system, that we not take that vote today, I understand, especially in light of the fact that a rescission would have to come up at a...
Well, I wasn't necessarily agreeing that you needed to rescind the prior approval. We've always, it's been a longstanding practice to modify conditions of approval in the first instance, and that's essentially what I saw that restriction as. But if it's the council's desire to do it through rescission, I have no objection. I mean, that's certainly the council's call.
I think that's the proper way to do it, because last thing we want to do is make a decision, pass a motion that's in conflict with the motion that we've passed previously, and there not being any action taken as to the first motion in the first place.
And I thought I was pretty clear in my comments that it was up to 25%. At no time did I think that it would be a 25% or nothing. That is not what I was interested in. Up to 25% makes sense for them to do whatever they can do.
And that would certainly be a valid basis to rescind when it comes back before you.
But I just want to say, after reviewing the tape, Mr. Quintero, it didn't make sense to me. What do you mean, up to 25%? 25% as a ceiling, you said. Is zero up to 25%? Yes. If that's the case, then you should have voted to approve it as stated.
If zero was the answer from the developer, then I would have been fine with that. I assumed that he could do 2% or 5% or 10% at once they worked on the numbers and followed Mr. Sananian's idea, and I guess on the tape, your idea, of combining some of the units, that it would be less than 25%. I couldn't imagine that they would be able to lop off a quarter and make this a viable project. Nor do I think that I'd be interested in putting up a building and just having 25% or whatever less inhabitants in that building. What we're trying to do is create a core of people living in that neighborhood. So I was perfectly happy with up to 25%.
Okay, I think we have a pretty good understanding of where everyone's leaning. I personally was for approval of the project as it was presented, so therefore, again, to avoid any appearance of impropriety, any appearance of gaming the system, as the terminology that was used, we'll take the votes next week. But now I'd like to open the public hearing and hear from, we have two speakers, Mr. Rodney Kahn and Michael Ganty.
Perhaps we can just provide a couple of introductory comments?
Please.
If you will, sir. The comments made by council generally can, last time on the 25th, can generally be grouped into Ms. Friedman wanting to reexamine parking, and if there was an opportunity to increase parking. Mr. Quintero, as he points out, looking at, is there a way to reduce density if that were possible? Mr. Najarian, looking at the value in order to push down the value of the land and thus shrink the profile of the project from a density standpoint, so it didn't have to be as large. I think everyone was generally satisfied with the look of the building. And from you, sir, the notion of possibly adding or taking into account the impact of additional families and family units into the profile of the project and the unit mix, Mr. Weaver was generally satisfied with the elements of the project. The development team took into account those considerations, and as we had indicated at the later end of that clip, they would take, kind of sharpen their pencils, see what they could do. And as was foreshadowed by something that Mr. Quintero said, they were able to come up with a series of modifications that basically revolve around a handful of reductions. So essentially, removing five units from the mix, essentially increasing the number of three-bedroom apartments at the expense of the other, the other unit mix that's there as part of the project, as, in doing so, alleviating the parking exception, one, by the reduction of units, and two, by altering the mix. And there was, I must disclose, an error in the parking calculation. They actually had a few more spaces than was originally reported, and so we have some of that information for you as well, thus, at least addressing many of those issues. We were able to retain KMA Kaiser-Marston Associates to do a perform analysis of this private equity deal, not a redevelopment deal, not a city housing deal, but rather a private equity deal, and reinforced the conclusions that were made as part of the original report. So those are the general elements that we heard, that the developer heard, that the developer took into account. And with that, I don't know, Jeff, is there anything that you want to reference? If not, we can turn it over to the development team to present to you, sir. Then I would turn it to Mr. Kahn, Mr. Ganty.
Mr. Mayor, just, you do have a couple of documents that were submitted as part of the record. One was the KMA analysis referenced by Mr. Ochoa. It had been emailed to all of you. It's also available, hard copy with Mr. Kasaki, and there's copies in the back. And then there's a revised, it looks like a revised site plan handed out by Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you. How much time will you need, Mr. Ganty?
At most, 15 minutes or less.
That's for yourself or the, both you and Mr.?
Both of us.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sananian and distinguished city council members and city staff. My name is Michael Ganty. My name is Michael Ganty. I'm managing director for Mill Creek Residential and Tropical Glendale Community Development Manager. We are pleased, again, to present our vision, our vision for this property located at the southern gateway to Glendale. As we mentioned in our prior city council hearing, this site is a textbook example of smart growth and community redevelopment without the use of public funds. Next, I want to present a recap of the March 25 hearing. In that meeting, city council approved the parking exception for above-grade parking, a CUP, conditional use permit, allowing an all-residential project in place of a mixed-use zone, and you certified the EIR. City council also directed Mill Creek to consider up to a 25% density reduction based on alternative three in the EIR. City council also directed Mill Creek to consider adding additional parking stalls. As I stated in the March 25 hearing, alternative three, 25% reduction, is economically infeasible, and the property will remain a blighted parking lot at the southern entrance to Glendale. Because of your comments questioning my integrity and validity of our statements and the staff's report, the city hired consultant Kaiser-Marston and Associates, KMA, to conduct an economic study of the Mill Creek proprietary community pro forma. Never in my over 30 years of real estate, in real estate, have I been asked or have I've given to outsiders our company internal proprietary development pro forma. We have nothing to hide, and we, as a show of good faith to you, to the city council, we were transparent and opened our financials concerning this development to KMA for their economic review. KMA conducted an independent third-party review of our current community versus the EIR alternative. KMA economic study verified and confirmed that alternative three reduction in density was economically infeasible. Over the past three weeks, we have conducted significant economic and design review of the current plan. As you directed, we also discussed a price reduction with the landowner who refused and put the city manager, Scott Ochoa, on notice of his inability to change his land price. We have agreed to eliminate 10 units, replace them with five three-bedroom family-style units, and added 14 additional guest parking stalls. Our parking ratio is now 1.6 stalls per unit versus the DSP requirement of 1.45 stalls per unit. So we've more than doubled the guest parking requirement for the DSP plan. Changes in regard to the Phase 1 MTA, we are now providing 72 additional parking stalls and 18 fewer units. We're building 220 units now, not the 225 that we presented on the 25th. And again, eliminated 10 housing units, replaced it with the five family-style three-bedroom units. And on our updated plan, we are now providing 31 more stalls than required by the downtown specific plan. I now want to introduce our land use consultant, who is also a Glendale resident, Rodney Kahn. Rodney will talk to you about the benefits this redevelopment will bring to the immediate neighborhood and the city of Glendale at large.
Thank you, Mr. Ganty. Good afternoon, Mayor, city council, and city staff. Once again, my name is Rodney Kahn. My offices are located here in the city of Glendale. This site is one of the main entrances into our city, and it is the definition of blight. It is used to store automobiles, equipment, trash containers, debris. All of it is surrounded by a chain-link fence that is either falling down or has razor wire on it. Welcome to the city of Glendale. This is how people see our city as they enter it and as they exit it. What does our project do for this neighborhood? And what does our project do for the city of Glendale? Our project takes this abandoned, desolate site, and it immediately transforms it. It beautifies the area. It creates a safer environment. Our project provides housing, housing near employment basis. It's near a transit-rich area, in close proximity to the Glendale Transportation Center, so our residents can walk to readily available public transportation. It's also within walking distances to businesses, shops, and restaurants in the area. As stated at the last hearing, our project generates the least amount of traffic, especially when compared to the previously approved traffic and project for the commercial center. As mentioned then, this trip generation or traffic reduction would be over 80% for residential This is the concrete embankment directly adjacent to our site. Our project will create a beautiful new gateway. It will landscape and put decorative hardscape on that concrete embankment on both sides of Los Feliz Road. We listened to what you said at the last hearing. We reduced density. We increased parking. We opened up the financial books that were true and accurate as we had stated. And this is it. There is nothing more we can give. You have gotten the absolute best project the city will ever see on this site. There is a window of opportunity here for this project, and we cannot afford to miss it. We can either keep this, or we can transform this area into something exciting and vibrant, which is this. I'd like to turn it back over to Mr. Ganty to conclude our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn.
In summary, the community benefits, over 600 construction jobs over a two-and-a-half-year period, 10 full-time jobs created once we operate the property. We will have, you know, new residents to the area, which will patronize the surrounding Glendale businesses. We're going to create a beautiful gateway to the southern edge of the city of Glendale. Investment in the Glendale community, dollars and cents. We're going to be investing over $4 million. And those are broken out amongst park and library, about $1 million five. The plant, the planning and permits, about another $1 million five. Schools, we'll get $800,000. Public art, another $280,000. At completion, it'll be an $85 million investment in the community. And again, the southern gateway to Glendale. And then, you know, over time, we'll be spending $400,000 a year in property taxes, of which $48,000 go to the city of Glendale. And Glendale Water and Power will receive and utilities somewhere in the neighborhood of $175,000 annually. And in closing, an $85 million investment in the community of Glendale. We're now available with our team to answer any questions you may have. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ganty. Any questions for the team?
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
Sir Ganty, the reduction that you've indicated, the five units, what, let me strike that. What prevented you from combining more units? An architectural issue or a financial issue?
Both, because this is a fully designed plan, and primarily, like I stated on the 25th, financial. This project is on the edge of economic infeasibility. We had the third-party study, which showed that it is grossly infeasible with a 25% reduction. So after careful review of the design, we eliminated 10 units, combined them to create the three-bedroom family units, and then added an additional 14 parking stalls.
How does this unit, in terms, how does this project, in terms of the density, compare to the one on North Central by Wood and Sanchez? Isn't that less dense up there?
Oh, just the opposite, sir. This, with the adjusted number of units, is approximately 98 units per acre. The specific plan that you were a part of actually allows up to 100, but eliminating five units drops it down to about 98. Our project on Central and Sanchez is over 150 units per acre, so significantly higher density.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, sir.
No other questions?
Not of Mr. Ganty.
Okay, you appear to have...
But I do have other questions of other...
Oh, you do?
I mean, unless you have Mr. Ganty.
Go ahead, Mr. Najarian.
Regarding Kaiser-Marston, is there someone here from Kaiser-Marston?
No, sir, I do not believe so.
And they were, they were hired, you know, a third-party hired directly by the city of Glendale. We conducted a meeting and opened our books and shared all our financial information, but that direct...
I understand that, and I appreciate that, but I certainly would like, would have liked to have had the opportunity to discuss the details of their findings with them, especially in light of the entire claim of infeasibility rests with their opinion on this. So shouldn't they have been here? I mean, this was on the agenda and all that, and this is the big, they brought in the big hitter. I mean, this is the third-party independent, you opened up the books. Is there a reason that we're deprived of asking Kaiser-Marston certain questions?
Only to the extent that Kaiser-Marston is in possession of proprietary information that would not be disclosed under some circumstances. So the information that you have as written down is that which would be made public as a public document. Mr. Raby, who did the analysis, who's done many analyses for Glendale, I'm sure could be made available to you, but would stick very, very closely to what has been submitted to you.
Mr. Ganty, may I request that for next Tuesday's hearing, you bring someone from...
We hired Kaiser-Marston.
Oh, we did? Okay, well, Mr. City Manager, let's make sure someone's here.
Most certainly, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, just a point, we will be paying for that expense.
Oh, you will be.
But we, it's contracted directly to the city to keep that separation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we would welcome that as well.
Thank you, great.
Again, I think this is a, an issue. I'm glad that we're continuing it today, because were we not to continue it, this would be a big problem for me, where the report that we're getting is just a, you know, slim two pages, that the 25% reduction in density would be infeasible. But I want to know, first of all, I want to know why didn't someone from Kaiser-Marston call me and ask me in particular what any concerns I had, since I'm the one who raised this whole issue? For instance, I'd like to know, if 25% kills the project, what level of reduction doesn't kill the project? I haven't heard from...
I don't know that Kaiser-Marston's going to tell you that, sir, because a lot of that is going to be determined by what Mr. Ganty and Mill Creek, as a private developer, as a private equity developer, whatever risk tolerance and profit margin that they have to achieve in order to obtain the funding and financing to do a given project, Kaiser-Marston may or may not be able to answer some of that. There will be an idea that they will have in talking with Mr. Ganty, but ultimately, it's a private deal.
Okay. One of the assumptions that Kaiser-Marston makes in the report that you gave us is that 10% is the absolute bottom line. I certainly should be entitled to inquire as to that and to get their opinion as to what other projects in the city are doing. These are the economic experts. If a deal can be done with 8% and still float, I want to know what level between 0 and 25% as Mr. Quintero called for. Would, I'm not, I wouldn't be dictating to them and saying, aha, this is what Kaiser-Marston says, now you better stick to that. But for my own information, as the policymaker, I should be able to know that.
But again, the point is that...
Then let's put it in closed session.
You could do a deal, I don't know that you have the basis to do it in closed session because it's not a city's real estate interest, but to the extent that Kaiser-Marston may tell you that you can do a deal for a 1% profit margin. You can do a deal as a private equity developer, losing money if you so choose. But there again, I think you, as the policymaker, as the body that makes these legislative decisions, you have a jurisdiction and a realm. And venturing off, I would submit to you, into the books and private interests of a private developer is where you start to venture outside of that realm. Now you, at the end of the day, have the ability to say, no, it's too much, it's too dense, not here, not now, not ever.
We did that, we did that last week.
And if you watch the end of the clip, sir, which you did not watch, if you watch the...
The clip is available.
We can watch the end of it.
If it's council's desire, we can run through this.
If it makes you happier...
In fact, we can move it up forward too, because there's some interesting discussions that go on.
Absolutely, there is, but I think what concludes it for you is the discussion from your colleagues that mirrors what Mr. Quintero said, that they had no interest in killing the deal, they wanted to see how low they could push that development density. That is very clear.
Exactly, that's exactly my point, Mr. Ochoa. That's exactly my point. All we did with Kaiser-Marston is say, go, no-go. 25% is no, the current configuration is a go. And is there nothing in between?
Is there six units that can be done, or four units that can be done?
This is what I want Kaiser-Marston to tell me.
But I think, again, you start to venture outside of what the realm of your jurisdiction is.
Hold on, hold on. This is my jurisdiction. The city, the density of the city is my jurisdiction.
But the economics behind what guides that density pursuant to the interests of a private equity developer is not.
And what I'm hearing, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Please, go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
I was just going to say, what I'm, what I think Mr. Ochoa's trying to say is, what I'm hearing is Kaiser-Marston, when they come, will not be able to say with exactitude on how many units can be knocked off of that. They can speak generally, they, obviously, they spoke on the 25%, they could speak on the profit margin, they will be able to address it, but we don't want your expectations to be that they'll be able to pinpoint with exactitude what number of units this project can afford to...
And that's a very good point. On this issue of Kaiser-Marston, let's make sure they're here on Tuesday. Mr. Najarian will have a lot of questions for them. They'll answer what they'll answer, and the council will consider it and vote accordingly as to how satisfied they are with those answers, how comfortable they are with them. They may not be satisfactory answers to some of them or most of us, but they will be here to answer those questions, from what I understand.
We built the entire Americana complex based on the recommendations and detailed analysis of Kaiser-Marston that resulted in a $60 million land grant to Mr. Caruso. So I need to know, if Kaiser-Marston's report is going to have any credibility with me, I need to get into the weeds with them and find out what their assumptions are. And if the answer is no, I'd like to know how much we're paying them and whether we can get our money back.
A fundamental difference, however, sir, is that you were investing as a redevelopment agency into that deal. You are not doing that here. And therein is a world of difference.
The point is the credibility of Kaiser-Marston in giving their opinion, not whether we're putting money into the deal or not. They're coming with an opinion, and I need to know whether that opinion holds any weight.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Mr. Quintero?
Now, there's a big difference. We gave Mr. Caruso that land, period. This is a private transaction with a property owner who's owned the property for many, many years, who's unsuccessfully tried to bring it to market, was unable to do so through different iterations. We now have a investor that does deals all over North America, I assume, certainly the West. And so I think they bent over backwards to go to Kaiser-Marston and give them the details that they've given them. And there is no subsidy from the city, it's a private transaction. So next week, I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions for Mr., whoever represents Kaiser-Marston. But the bottom line is, it's a private transaction, and we have the letter that, in their professional opinion, this is what Mill Creek is willing to do that makes sense for Mill Creek and their investors. So stay tuned next week, I'm looking forward to...
Kaiser-Marston analysis doesn't even, if I'm correct, doesn't analyze the revised project that Mr. Ganty discussed with the five fewer units, correct? So I need Kaiser-Marston to come to the table with some answers. And if they want to take the Fifth Amendment, if they want to claim proprietary... I'm going to throw them off the panel if I don't get answers to the questions I have. Well, I can't throw them off, but I'm going to look, I'll, I'll place a motion to remove them from our economic analysis panel if they can't answer basic, legitimate, good-faith questions on how they came up with their analysis, Mr. Quintero. I need to know what, where they're coming from. Does this work out? According to their analysis, does this five-unit reduction pencil out or not? We're entitled to know that. We're the policymakers, it shouldn't be hidden from us.
Well, there are four policymakers that are quite happy with this project, period.
Who? Which ones?
Everyone but you.
We had a vote. It was three to two. Did I miss something?
Yeah.
You changed your mind, not me.
For an analysis, for a 25, up to, I thought, 25% analysis. The bottom line for me is that these people have bent over backwards to provide us the information, they shaved down the amount of units, they've increased the parking, and next week, whatever Kaiser Marston says or doesn't say, as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I'm willing to listen, it's going to be fascinating, but the bottom line is, I want this project built, the other council members want this project built. We think it's a good project in the right location. So that's all I can say.
You changed your mind from four weeks ago, Mr. Quintero, when you voted for option three, the 25% density reduction. So that was the time to make those discussions, and we wouldn't be where we are today if you made that...
Once again, once again, up to 25%, and that, I think, is what they studied, up to 25%.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Yes, Mr. Gentey, please.
We, we did vigorously study this over the last three weeks. We did reach out to the landowner to see if there would be any participation on his end. And I want to go on record saying that this is it. This is five units. It, it does have an economic impact. It, we're on that edge of being financeable or infeasible, and I just want to make sure that I state that clearly. It's a 2.2% reduction to the density, a density that is allowed by right in the specific plan that you adopted.
Thank you. Yes, yes, Mr. Weaver.
Maybe I didn't hear clearly, but I thought I heard up to 25%. That, maybe it wasn't clearly said, but I was with Mr. Quintero, up to, and I didn't know what that number would be. You obviously figured it out, so...
Yes.
Thank you. So if there are no other questions, we'll close the public...
I would leave the public hearing open and continue to next week without further public notice.
Sure.
Is that the date? Is that the date? We're going to go next week? I would suggest we continue to next week without further public notice.
I'd like to continue to next, to next week, and I'd like to move forward next week with the side on whether, I mean, I'd like her to be here, obviously, for the reasons...
And then it'll be up to the council to decide whether to go forward or not, so...
Yes. But that's about it. I don't think anyone wants to particularly speak about, on this subject right now.
You didn't have any more cards, Mr. Mayor?
We have no more cards on this item.
Do you have a motion to continue to the 22nd, for the public notice?
Second. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian?
Yes.
Harrow?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Sananian?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Return.